8:02. Bonnie, you're on the record?
We are on the record, sir.
TB 79, we're gonna go live. Welcome, everybody. And we're gonna start with four commissioners present. Tonight is Tuesday, October 1st. The general and general meeting for the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have a kind of, I think, an easy agenda tonight, but there's a lot of work to do on resolutions that we have. Want to take us out?
I was just gonna ask you. Yes, okay, let's begin. General meeting. The first is a mandatory referral number three dash two thousand nineteen. The Board of Selectmen, Weed Beach, Near Water Land, proposed substantial improvements to the Weed Beach property. This report will be due honor before November 1st, two thousand nineteen.
I can fill the commission in a little bit on this. Pam Gary, Park and Recreation Director, is here. Answer any questions you have. I also, I think we emailed everyone a plan?
Yes.
We have a larger version of that plan here, which we can look at. But basically, this is the first step in the Weed Beach Meadow and Trail Project. Part of it's being funded by Darien Athletic, or usually known as the Darien Athletic Foundation, Darien Foundation. And so they are going to the RTM on Monday, October 21st, to get the funding approved and get the gift accepted. So our report needs to get to the RTM prior to that date. So that's why it's on the agenda. So the way it usually works with these reports is the commissioner has thirty-five days to act upon it. I put a copy of the state statute in your packets. You have to write a report on whether it's consistent with the town plan or inconsistent with the town plan. In this case, Pam showed a number of improvements to the property. As you may recall, the town bought property at the end of Short Lane a few years ago. There was a house there. The town took the house down, kind of flattened it out, re-landscaped it a little bit. And this is really the opportunity to incorporate that area into the park. The plan looks kind of like this. Near Water Lane is here. Short Lane was, here's the sewer plant here. The Short Lane property-
We call it a water treatment plant.
What did I call it?
A water treatment-
I'm gonna call it a-
This is Darien.
So you can see that there's a number of different improvements throughout the Weed Beach property.
What is new, Jeremy Mask?
Sure.
Or Pam? Do you want to sort of-
Pam might be able to answer better. I think I can answer it, but what is new? But I'll try to run through it, Pam, and then you can stop if I'm running. Come on up to the microphone. We have a, I'll call it a boardwalk system, an area where they're gonna create a boardwalk style walking path, walking, strolling, meandering, and that'll go around the park. Point nine-one mile?
Point nine-one.
They're gonna do some extra parking right now in the overflow area. When you go into the park, I'll call it to the left when you first drive in, they're gonna take that gravel parking area, pave it.
Yes.
The area which would be, I'll call it, to the far left here-
Where's the entrance presently?
You got it, you're right.
Yep.
Jesus, was I wrong. I went up there today and I couldn't figure out where we were.
The two major items are the trail. They're putting in four huts around for sunning. I think you're moving the gas grills or the barbecue pit?
No.
No? You're moving some, then you're moving some-
Parking, the picnic area as it is today, will stay the same place that has grills there. And they're having, in the Short Lane area, which was the Short Lane area, they're proposing a paver plaza with a kind of sweeping lawn, almost like an amphitheater kind of feel that would look down to the paver plaza. And amongst that lawn gathering space, there would be some of those, as you would call them, pavilions or covered huts that you put picnic tables under.
Just timeout one second.
Sure.
Can you get Pam Gary for the record?
I need to get your name for the record, please.
Pam Gary, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Spell your last name.
G E R Y.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So would the boardwalk be wood or wood?
Right, the foundations are still, I think they're pretty much have, we're dealing with the monies now, you know, concrete is a little bit more expensive and we're looking at an I-P-A wood, which I'm pretty certain that's exactly what they're gonna go with. Guilford, town that I live in, has an I-P-A boardwalk that they've had for quite a few years and has held up beautifully in the sun and the water.
It lasts forever, pretty much.
It lasts about twenty-five plus years. And concrete lasts a little bit longer, but quite a bit more expensive. So they were considering that for the boardwalk, asphalt for all the paved pathways. But the boardwalk itself, they're going, teetering back and forth. So the next meeting we have is with the contractor, who will try to balance out those numbers for us based on the materials. But it looks to me like we're gonna be going with the I-P-A.
For the purposes of this mandatory referral, we don't have to get into the weeds on all this stuff.
Yes.
So let's keep it high level.
Right. Because Pam is gonna come back to us with an actual coastal site plan, flood damage prevention application, regrading, November, December, January timeframe.
Okay, so to answer the first two questions, is this consistent with the town planning conservation development? My opinion is a hundred percent yes, because you're enhancing the beaches and the public parks of town. The second item that you said was, does it go to the level of substantial proposed improvements? We have no idea what the dollar numbers are, and it's really not our purview anyway, but the amount of work that's going on there, I think that's a substantial improvement. So that would also be a yes. Does anybody disagree with those two points?
I have been leery of this, and I guess it does, it is consistent with the plan of conservation and development. It seems to me an intensification of the use of the beach in a lot of different ways, including even concert spot and whatnot. But I guess I can't quote chapter and verse of the Plan of Conservation and Development to say that this doesn't satisfy it. It is a recreation space, and I suspect that it does satisfy it. If we, if this was our only bite at it, I would have more questions about the potential of a concrete boardwalk than about nine-tenths of paved walkways.
Right, that's a different, you have a different shot at that.
But, okay, all right.
You have a different shot at that. In terms of intensity of use?
Yeah.
This is not a use issue. I mean, they could do this and never have a concert there. We can control the concerts at some other point in time. My only other question is, I don't know what happened to the application, but the Sailing Club was supposed to build a building, I think on your land. Is that totally off the table now?
Off the table.
That's gone, so that's never, that's-
They never got the funding for that.
All right, so that's not gonna come back, because, so is that approval expired? You don't wanna have-
We have just kept the design with that in mind, so that-
Okay, 'cause I thought that lawn-
Yeah, sure. Right, this is Darien Junior Sailing?
Yes.
'Cause that's where the great lawn is.
No, the proposed pavers, there's near, in this boat, let me see if I can take that out, in the corner there.
The Lawn Meadow area, I thought it was where the-
No, not the lawn, no, it's down here. There's a pad that was placed so that they could put all their boats on there in the front corner.
Is that this pad here?
Yep.
That's existing now.
Okay. But I thought they was supposed to build a, I thought they was supposed to build a building.
They were considering, this is prior to me starting here-
Right, yeah, it goes back like, at least four years.
Four years ago, they, so maybe five years ago, I think there was some sort of proposal that they would get donations to match the town. That never came through.
Okay, so we just have to, it does, it's a little bit outside of what we're talking about here, but we just have to confirm that that's canceled. Because you can't have two approvals going on the same property at the same time.
I'll check on that.
Great.
But it doesn't preclude them from coming back five years from now with the money and saying, "We wanna build a building, can we do that?"
But it's still the town land. They have to get the land from the town.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah, from what I understand, the town decided it wasn't the right thing to do at that time.
Oh, all right.
They weren't gonna fund it.
I think further to Mr. Riley, your comment, I also had a little bit of hesitation when I first saw mandatory referral previously for like, for example, the town's purchase of the Oxford Hound Club, because it was hard for me. Of course, these plans could be within the town plan of conservation and use, but it also could be too much. So in regards to paths and the parking lot, I'm inclined to say that this mandatory referral seems okay to me. The Oxford Hound Club was, it was so broad that we tabled it, and then the town came back with more detailed plans. But I think for this plan, this seems all right, and they can hammer out how much pavement. We don't wanna pave paradise and put up a parking lot.
We paved paradise. There's a song about that, right?
But I think that the broad stroke, yes, making new paths and enhancing parking and use is, in general, okay with the plan, with the town's plans. And then we'll get into the greater detail once they get there, too.
Great.
So I'm okay with that.
Any other comments from this side?
No.
You're good?
I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good.
Okay, so I'll just say, we're gonna all vote in favor of a favorable report?
And Fred and I will draft something, and we'll run it by you, just to make sure we got it right. We'll get that out to you probably Thursday's email.
But just for the new people, this report is like four sentences.
Gotcha.
Okay, it's not us.
So that's everyone in favor?
Yes.
Great, six to zero. Great.
Moving on, we're gonna move on to the amendment of business site plan number one seven zero dash A Heights Pizza, eight seven eight and eight eight two Boston Post wrote, "It's a request for decorative lighting."
Okay. As you know, as a lot of people know, and hope everybody knows, that Heights Pizza moved from the heights to where Planet Pizza was. There's effectively, you got a pocket park next to it. It looks like they wanna put lights in the parking lot, and my wife thinks it's a great idea.
It's a go.
She does. I think we have ALDO, is that right?
Yes, it's ALDO Criscoll, it's C-R-I-S-C-U-O-L-O for Heights Pizza. I just here to request your permission to put some string LED lights.
This isn't really an application, it's just like a yay or nay?
It's a minor amendment to the existing site plan. No change in the hours or operation of the restaurant. It's just that, that, I'll call it seating area, planted area, is just, there's no lighting there. It's pretty dark. And so this'll kind of brighten it up, and if people wanna sit in dusk.
And just to follow up on that, it's very similar to Sienna, and also the-
Santa.
Santa, and then also the Corbin District Project, and all the artist renderings, they have that same kind of lighting all over the place.
This is the little triangle, right?
Correct.
Between the store and the point of the intersection.
Officially, Gray Court. The Gray Court, yes. And what we're sending around, which ALDO is aware of, is approval from the property owner, saying, "Yeah, this is great."
Let's get this, let's say this is your landlord.
I have a quick question, which just is, are you gonna hook them up onto timers so that you'll be responsible with making sure they go off when you close?
Yes.
What time do you usually close?
We close at ten on weekday, just Friday and Saturday at eleven.
Okay.
Every other night at ten.
So they would go off when you close?
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
Any questions from this side?
Does anyone else pass on the nature of the lights, the color of the lights, that sort of thing, or is this the one, like, are they the same as Senna, or?
The only other thing I would say is, and I thought I saw it, would ARB look at this at all? Because ARB could, said something about the sign.
Well, there's no change, no change in the sign, okay?
No change.
So it'd be something that I think is so minor that P&amp;Z could handle, which you could certainly say with the situation, the lights would be white.
Yeah, actually, when you brought up color, that's a good idea. I think I would like them to be just white lights or, you know, yellow.
It's just white light.
Yeah, because there's, I'm saying, white is very, remember we got into that? White doesn't mean white?
Yes.
So what are we supposed to?
No, but we've talked about that in the past. We don't wanna get into the micro management of what color lights.
I know, so I don't think we should say white. I'm saying, don't say what color the light should be.
I would say clear.
No, you can't. We had that whole, that whole bulb discussion. LEDs coming, blue, white, white, blue.
What's being requested?
Exactly.
I believe, so I checked, Shake Shack has the same lights, and Senna has the same lights. They're the same color. They're not a bright white, they're more of a, a little bit warmer color.
It's like yellowish.
Yeah.
I just was saying, in the vein of not looking like a Christmas tree all year round.
Is this, this is from PB Architects? Is this the lights, the lighting product image? Is this, this is a tier sheet?
Yeah, that's from, yeah, Yasek, yeah, Yasek Bigosinski did that for me, yeah.
Okay. All right, let's just say to the approval of the Planning and Zoning State.
Can we say non-colored? Whatever the other ones are, can we say in the, in the style of the lights that are used at Senna and-
Previously approved.
Good idea. Previously approved.
Yeah, previously approved.
Perfect.
Good deal.
Very good?
Perfect.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Go have your lights.
Thank you.
I'll be there Friday night.
Okay, moving on, the amendment of coastal site plan number three two four dash A, the flood damage prevention application number three seven three dash H, landfilling and reglating application number four one eight dash A, Stephen Penn Epley, forty-seven Five Mile River Road, this is a request for modification and grading around the house now under construction.
This application was something that we approved last year, or earlier this year. Correct me if I'm wrong, did, I think the applicant was saving the first floor of the house and building up, so that the first floor became the basement?
Pieces of houses.
And the driveway goes up and around. The neighbor was very, very supportive at the time, and it looks like they built a temporary berm that they wanna keep and make it permanent. Okay? The letter from Race Engineering, at the end of the day, says that it's not gonna increase any wave, it's not gonna increase any, any problems, and then that, we also got a letter from the neighbor, place it up two feet, a fill underground, obviously can assume to be accepted without engineering analysis or certification. I think that's okay, too. And it looks like both neighbors, that affect both, on the same exact page.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Epley?
Captain Epley, ETP, LEW.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions?
So you're just gonna go up two feet higher than what we see in the photo?
No, 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 no.
Oh, sorry.
What you're seeing there is the natural grade. So in the plan, it kind of was more of a sharper angle. That plus topsoil is it.
Oh, okay.
And the neighbor, you know, it's kinda like the rough grades we had, and it just looked very natural. So, you know, in kind of, kind of doing, shooting the grades and figuring out the heights, just to move that contour line out just a little bit would solve and keep that natural taper away from the house.
Okay, great.
So it's, oh, it's basically already there.
The subgrade, so all I have to do is add topsoil, essentially, in that picture. And you're where, it just, it's the-
Anything?
I have nothing. I have to show off my ignorance again, sorry. But, six times, but what is an eight-foot, or an eight-foot contour line? That's where the elevation is at eight foot, all the way around? And so instead of it being closer to the house, it's not gonna be a little farther away?
Correct.
That's the distance.
Yeah, it's just getting pushed out a little bit further.
Okay.
Sorry if I could find a rule on that, but all right, good.
Okay. Jan, you okay? Okay?
Yep.
All those in favor? There you go. Thank you, Mr. Epley.
Thank you, have a good night.
Next.
Determination of the commission policy regarding rooftop patios for both residential and commercial. Jeremy?
Sure, this is kind of something new and interesting. Darien, not that I could think of, had an occasion where you've had a rooftop area for the owner or tenants to use, whether on the commercial side or the residential side. Saw a couple weeks ago, informally, the folks who are thinking about redeveloping Seven Sedgwick, talked about the possibility of a rooftop area for the tenants to be. About the same time, the request that you have in your packets for, to, I'll call it, finish, a small area of rooftop for an office building came through. So I spoke to Dave Keating, the zoning officer, and said, you know, the commission doesn't really have a policy, procedure, how to handle these, so we felt that we'd come to you tonight, talk a little bit about it. You've probably all seen some in your travels, whether residential or non-residential. We just wanted to get a feel from the commission, whether you count that as floor space, whether you count it as coverage, whether you count it towards building height, whether you count it towards the parking requirements, or whether you say, you know what, up here in New England, they're not used a heck of a lot. In a commercial setting, they're probably only used by the people who are in the building anyways, you're not bringing in more people. Similarly, probably for residential, is it's not open to the public, it's open to the people that live there. But we wanted to talk to you a little bit about it, get your sense of what you've seen, what issues or concerns you might have, whether it's concerns of commercial buildings that might be very close to a residential building, or vice versa, something that might impact other people. If you have concerns about the amount of stuff that's on there. Certainly, we want to talk about tables, chairs, maybe some temporary lighting, we just heard about temporary lighting, maybe some heaters. Temporary, temporary, do you have to bring it in? Or you leave it out there and say, you know what, there's a nice October day, like tomorrow? Go ahead. So want to get your sense of how you want us to treat these things, both from the commercial side and the residential side.
Okay, I think Dave Keating started out with a good memo. He, you're not calling it a roof pa, you're not calling it patio, 'cause that's supposed to be on the ground. And you're also not calling it a deck, because it's, you know, twenty feet in the air. So we have to kind of, he came up with his own new, a rooftop deck. These are the newest thing in a lot of architecture and a lot of, a lot of buildings. They're all, they're all over the place in residential buildings and in office buildings. And some tenants actually require them for office buildings. Relative to the specific nineteen, nineteen Old Kings Highway, I think anything we can do for office landlords in town, so they can lease additional space, is a good thing.
I agree.
Because we want our office space to be full and not vacancy, especially for what I would call a Class B building. Class A buildings, which are the newest ones, like seventeen Old Kings Highway, ten twenty Post Road, those really don't, those are the newest modern design. They don't have a problem renting to people older buildings, too. So with that said, I think you have to keep an eye on it and not, not let it run wild. One thing that I always think is lacking in this package, and it was never required, is most of these decks have a floor plan. Where, you know, this one's in specific, and we're talking specific and we're talking general at the same time, is I think five hundred and thirty square feet. In five hundred and thirty square feet, you put a lot of people on it, and you put a lot of furniture on it. They didn't provide us with a floor plan, whereas most people do, because that's how you buy furniture, that's how you figure out the table, is it gonna be, the gas grill is. I personally don't have a problem with them being lit with the twinkle lights that we just talked about at Heights. I personally don't have a problem with, you know, the gas heaters, so you can stand there in the winter. Back in the old days, this is where guys had, you know, smoked cigarettes and chucked it over the edge. The thing that's important, and it's really, again, outside our purview, is the height of the parapet wall that surrounds it, and how close you can get to the parapet wall. If there's a thirty-inch parapet wall and the, and the building code is forty-eight inches, what they typically do is put a railing on top of it. And they also keep people away, you know, from the wall by like a foot and a half or something like that. That's all building code. So I, I think it's, it's the wave of the future, it's actually the wave of the present. I wouldn't wanna inhibit anybody, but I would like to see when these come up again, have floor plans. If you flip it to, how did we count it in parking and all that other stuff, the, the best example in our town today is Narot Yaklo. Okay? When they did their building, they actually shrunk their building in square footage, but they increased their open area, so now everything's outside. So the deck got bigger, the building got smaller. If we do parking by, you know, three per thousand, technically, they would have less parking, and not more parking. But if you went to them and said, you know, now you can have a wedding for two hundred people, or the old one, you can have a wedding for a hundred and fifty people, but it's more dense, so you have to watch that stuff.
I don't think it's exactly the same, though.
It's not exactly the same, but it's still outside, it's still outside space that's usable. You may get a couple dollars more in rent, because it comes with it.
Yeah.
You know, apartments in New York City or apartments even in St. Edward with, there's like a fifty-dollar a month premium for one with a terrace and one with a deck.
Everything.
And doesn't have one with a deck. So that's my two cents. Let's start on this side. You guys have any comments?
Well, I guess my comment, you know, and again, you raised sort of with the floor plan issue, which there isn't here in this case, and I understand, like, there's no outlet here, and they don't propose putting an outlet which would sort of address the fairy lighting or the heater and things like that. But to code, they only can, there's only five-person occupancy on that space, and the seating appears to be, you know-
They have two couches, it's two people per couch, and a table.
I don't know, I think three people per couch.
Correct, you mean at the minimum, right?
They're kind of planning six people, and I don't think you would use couches and a table at the same time, so I'm not gonna, you know, but I think a floor plan would be helpful, 'cause I think while it's not our purview to oversee, it thinks that more fall in the building code and the building department's sort of purview, occupancy, weight, and safety, of course, is gonna be something I'm always gonna think about. So I think floor plans, and while they do address outlets here, but I think floor plans is probably always gonna be, and, you know, entry, like, if it wasn't originally designed to have that space be used for tenants and for occupants, how do they get out there? How can they get back in if there's an emergency? And so I think when buildings are designed like they are now, contemplating use of the roof, and this one was not, I'm sure there is adequate, you know, doors and that they, you know, people, you know, all different abilities can get in and out. But that, those would be the sort of things I would be concerned about, and that we're not planning things with seating, and that there's gonna be a blind eye to the occupancy load.
Agreed.
Yeah, but otherwise, I think it's cool.
Somebody brought this up last week, and relative to the deck at the Glenbrook athletic club, was it called?
Spring Day.
Somebody, a good idea, say, what's the maximum occupancy? And I don't know if that made into the resolution or not, but-
It did.
I think they were on the idea.
It's like fifty people. So I don't know why this is different than that, but who knows? Anything else on this side?
I'm just curious, when you're talking about a floor plan, do you mean that we would get into where the couch goes and the tables?
Yep.
Yeah, because it's, it's a small space, not originally designed, for this kind of use.
You'll get that for like, just for example, the, the, it was like the Palmer's site and the Federal's site and David Henry's site, they show where the planters are, where the benches are, where the seating is, where the umbrellas are, everything.
And they never move?
They, most of the time, they don't, but that's where they start out at the beginning.
No, 'cause it's part of the design.
Okay. So in the interest of full disclosure, this example we're discussing happens to be my office filming.
Would you like to eat lunch there?
I don't believe I can flick it out, however. This is on the third floor, we're on the first floor. But it does suggest to me to speak up for other tenants, who would probably only be sensitive to noise issues.
Oh, that's a good point.
And, and I'm, and I'm looking at this flooring system that is mentioned here.
Yeah.
I would think if there's a fair amount of traffic over it, that could be noisy to boats below, and, and to others. So, if there are only five people here, you know, how noisy can that group be? But how you control that number, I'm skeptical, but.
But see, that, that's going to be a landlord tenancy issue.
Yeah, that's landlord tenancy.
Okay, I think our landlord moved out recently.
Worst thing they did, they lived for seven fifty.
Exactly.
That guy who lived in, well, in Darian.
All right, well, okay, anyway, just a comment, I wouldn't stand in the way of it, though. I think, I understand what you're saying, and I doubt what you're talking about.
Jim?
Um, I think roof decks are a great idea, I like them a lot. Uh, I definitely wanted, if it wasn't originally intended to have humans on it, just weight capacity, right? Because there's going to be times where, like in a house, something should not be used as a deck. It's over a sunroom, and it actually was never built to withstand, you know, having a table, chairs. Fire code, you know, what's the evacuation plan, and is there a, if you're going to use that for human use, then there needs to be some sort of printout, right, of what the evacuation plan is? Because you have a friend who's visiting the building, so that needs to be mounted. So, if, I think part of allowing someone to use it is that they need to be able to do that. And if there's a gas-powered heater, there should probably be a fire extinguisher. I don't know, not the fire marshal, but I just want to make sure that's safety first, that that's handled.
Agreed, safety, maximum number of people which comes into safety, all the concerns you guys said, disturbance to tenant, other tenants.
Oh, and I guess the other thing I sort of thought of, and I know this is, is on the zoning side, you know, in a business district, if there's mixed-use, you know, zones, allowing rooftops, in which areas, which zones are they going to be permitted? Because if you're on a rooftop, and then you're looking down into residential space, you know, that could be a concern, both for privacy and the safety issue.
We ran into that a lot, like, at Old Town Hall Homes. Right? That's a tall building.
Yeah.
And one of the neighbors came up and said, hey, you know, that person that's going to be living in apartment twenty-two C can look right in my daughter's bedroom.
Yeah.
You know, so it's a little bit of the same.
But I think it's residential and residential, as opposed to business.
Other than.
Looking into a residential home, I, we, sort of more of the mixed-use zoning areas might be.
You can, we can, that can definitely be handled relative to screening.
Yeah, but I think that would sort of be like, they kind of, in addition to the other issues we discussed, something that I think should be, if we're discussing, sort of policy concerns.
Great point.
Jim?
Well, I, I'm not sure that I understand what we're doing here. The, the agenda says commission policy regarding rooftop patios.
Right.
And we've got this letter, or quasi-application, from nineteen Old Kings Highway. I think to be fair to the applicant, if that's, this is.
It's not an application.
Going to become an application. But, in order to be fair, I think the commission ought to decide, do they want applications in the case of these? And what are the guidelines?
Right, general meeting, public hearing, site plan amendment, whatever, and what details?
Rooftop patios are not on, in our regs.
Right, Dave's, Dave's creating a name.
Maybe Dave ought to create a new section two seventy-five point, five point three, whatever.
We just finished.
Just say, so that people that want to do this have some guidelines, and there's some consistency between the way we respond to this, this issue and things that, that follow.
Right, so, and Jimmy made a good point, is, does the commission want to have public hearings on these? Or, in a case like this, where it's a commercial building in a commercial zone overlooking I ninety-five, do you say, you know what, we can do this as a site plan amendment at a general meeting without a hearing, as long as they have some kind of floor plan?
I definitely want a, I definitely want a floor plan.
Really?
I definitely want a floor plan.
Maybe just in certain zones, I lean towards public hearing, like mixed use.
Okay.
It's never a bad idea to have neighbors be able to comment.
It's, it's, right, you're a hundred percent correct. It's never be a, but, never a bad idea to have neighbors noticed.
Yeah.
That someone's going to build a roof deck next door, because all of a sudden, one day, you break up and there's somebody having a party in the deck. So, you're like, whoa.
Two sisters in Manhattan living.
I just might suggest to, to David and all of you, that, I know Westport permits this, I've enjoyed.
Oh, yeah.
This in Westport, you might get a copy of it there.
It does go to Stanford.
We just do, I worked at a brand-new building at sixty Main Street in Westport, and the whole thing is an outdoor deck. But that took them a year and a half to get the approvals from Town Hall, and Westport's no piece of cake. I mean, I don't get into the public hearing or, or general meeting, but I, I get the sense that everyone wants a public hearing, which is fine.
So, as part of any request, you're going to want to know the details of the proposed area, square footage, occupancy, whatever.
Safety.
Fire marshal, review, and where, where it is relative to buildings around it.
They, right, and they should have the.
Hours of use.
They should have the, the height of the, of the walls, which is going to be on the plans.
Yeah.
I lumped that into safety.
Now, how does, how does the occupancy in the deck? And how is that, in, in this app, in this document we have about the people who said five, where'd that number come from?
Catherine Spillane, who wrote this letter, is the architectural designer, she's here tonight, and she can answer that question.
Okay. All right, so, hold on one second, so did we answer the first part? I think we're all agreeing that, that we're, in concept, we like rooftop decks.
Yeah.
In concept, we want public hearings on all these things.
Correct.
And there's going to be a checklist of items that should be included in these packets.
Correct.
Okay, great.
Jeremy and.
Site plan hours, height of walls, fire marshal, and building official zone, nearby buildings and locations.
Ingress, an ingress onto the deck.
Yep, got it.
Ma'am, welcome. Please state your name for reference.
Catherine Everly Spillane, S.P.E.L.L.A.N.E.
Okay, now, you are the architect that wrote one of these letters.
Architectural designer for the Everwell, which is a startup.
There you go, catch them, okay.
Two women, and they're a tenant within the four-stone building at nineteen Old Kings Highway South. So, Jeremy, to clarify, does the commission not see the plan that we submitted?
We didn't, we have not given it to the commission, we do have it in my office.
So, just want everyone to know that it was submitted with a plan, it's not like we're doing this willy-milly or anything.
No, I, I, it's architects, you guys get paid to make plans, I was surprised. You don't get paid to take pictures like this.
Well, I, I mean, we submitted the three plans, I don't know why you don't have one, that's.
That's okay.
Not for me to say. But yeah, so that five people for occupancy, the conceptual idea is that the business occupancy load is just carried out to the patio, so it's a hundred square feet per person. So, for instance, in the interior, which is finished and open for business, it's a little over twenty-two hundred square feet, so twenty-two people in the interior. So, we just carried that, I mean, I've had conversations with Peter about this for a couple of months, and the rationale is, it's a business, it's just an extension of the interior, so we use the same occupancy load. So, it's five people out there.
So, you're taking five hundred and seventy square feet divided by a hundred?
Mm-hmm.
But on the other one, you have eight thousand three hundred square feet, no?
That's the existing condition of this flat roof.
Okay, 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 you didn't say what size your, your office space is.
Well, because it's.
That's fine.
Yeah, it's just. Well, also, that's not really zoning, that's building code for occupancy, but, yeah, so that's where that five comes from. Which makes sense, because the intention of this specific business is an all-female co-working space. So, mainly operating during daytime hours. And because only twenty-two people would be allowed on the interior at any time, it kind of makes sense, given the size, the square footage of this tiny patio. And it's only tiny, because it's a startup, so they can't afford to outfit the entire.
I, I, my apartment in New York City was five hundred and thirty-two square feet, and it was pretty big. It's, it's a nice-sized patio.
Oh, I mean, relative to the amount of flat space. I would, I should have included a more detailed photo survey of this, but it looks as if when this building was built in nineteen seventy, they intended to make this.
There's a door there.
Because there's just a normal regulation door walking flat out to the, it's not like we're installing a new door.
Okay.
The door's there, we're not touching it.
That was a question.
So.
Keep going, I, I.
Oh, no, ask your question.
Whether, we, somebody mentioned parking in the, in how many. A rooftop, an outdoor rooftop is not going to be used in the winter.
Yeah.
So, the weather represents additional parking demand or not, sort of depends on, on the time of year. Furthermore, if the startup is successful, and they want to utilize the rest of the roof.
That would trigger parking.
That would be, that would have a much more significant impact on potential parking load than otherwise.
Well, that could get into use, it, it's, it's relative to, I mean, the, the, the letter that, I'm sorry, your first name. Catherine, she put together, you know, book club meetings, potluck dinner for new mother group. To me, you know, you might have more than five people that come to the new mothers' potluck dinner.
That was my next question, because I did receive some marketing materials for the client, for the tenant.
Oh, cool, okay.
They did say they were having events, and I'm wondering if the twenty-two people, where were the events to be hosted, are they?
On the inside, not the outside.
But then, if that will be more than twenty-two people, because it won't be like the workspace.
Events might, disclaimer, I have nothing to do with the business side of it.
But you're just here, I mean, rel, relative to that, and you're not, you're not the, the tenant, but we're not here, and I don't know who would police it if there's a party.
Yeah.
You know, a potluck dinner, it starts at six o'clock on a Thursday, and eight people around the deck, you know, I don't know how you, it doesn't, I mean, I could really care less. But I don't know how you police it.
Things in the, did you see that, Jennifer?
Yeah, but I mean, I will say, as someone who's a member of an all-women's co-working space in Manhattan, extremely successful, like, we have a deck, it's kind of this ratio, like, no one, we're not like, all of a sudden, moving upstairs to like, work on the deck. Like, you're doing work. And if, in the events at my, you know, like Hillary Clinton, like, there's huge names that show up, and interestingly enough, they cap it out. Like, so if the capacity for their indoor space is twenty-two, oh, sorry, twenty-three, twenty-four, you can't go to the event. So, I, there's times where I get, I can't go to events in my own space.
It gets sold out.
But so, the events are related to members.
Yes, related to members, you're like, you can't get in.
I, that's concerned, like, it's not going to be like an open to the public, like.
No, it's a membership club, so you pay per month.
Based.
Where are those rules written?
They're in there, you have to pay, you can't, you can't.
Yeah, you can't just like.
It's a business plan.
Female.
No, 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 that's, it's open to all, this one's open to all.
Everwell?
But.
It's weird for the female experience, but I think.
I'm a member of the League of Women Voters.
Okay, I think it's a little different, that's funny, okay, so mine is an open to all.
It is, which are you the wing?
No, no, I'm saying, I, I didn't realize that was.
Do you belong to the wing, or?
Yeah.
I think it's just, I mean, this is, has nothing to do with any of this. But it's fascinating, the conversations they were having, like, focus groups, where women, particularly women who might be starting off in their own venture, their husband might be more prone to agree to the financial implication of joining a membership club if they were able to join.
What?
I don't know.
That's weird, anyway, in New York City, it's just women, and I'll tell you, the capacity is capped, just like, I'm sure.
And I think it's.
Understood, but my, my only.
Intimate experience, I don't think this is like a hundred people, because you can't fit a hundred people. Like, if you go in for a tour.
So, then it would be offsite if there were some like.
If there was something that big, it would probably, yeah.
All members invited, right, okay.
But my, my only point is that if there's twenty-five people at the event, right? There's nothing in our control, if ten of them, ten of them go outside in the deck.
Or the fire marshal.
But that would be a building code.
Yeah, I don't know.
Building code, fire marshal.
One more time, please, thank you.
So, that's fine, what are we doing with her application, Jeremy?
Well.
This is not an application, what are we doing with this?
Certainly, based on what I've heard tonight, the commission would want to have a public hearing on this matter. So, Fred and I can work with Catherine on scheduling the public hearing, if that's the sense I'm getting from the commission.
That's the sense we're getting from the commission.
Okay, we'll, we'll work on it, we'll, we'll pull everything together. Catherine, I'm sure is going to go back to her client, talk a little bit about it, and we'll pull together what you're looking for based on the information you gave us.
And I would give them, you know, speed deference and get them on the list as soon as possible, because she's already here once.
Right, we can see what we can do about the twenty-second, it's tight, three weeks from tonight, but we'll work together on that.
Three week, three weeks from tonight, okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, hold on one second, so, we're, we're good with that, right? And it's fine, we're going to see them back, we're going to see this come back another time.
But also looking for some formality from David and Catherine.
Correct, right.
Yeah, what we'll do is, this will give us an opportunity to develop some kind of checklist outline for folks, I'll work with Catherine. She said, before plans are done, they're actually big, we'll get them to shrink them down with other details about where this building is, the pictures are helpful, those are always good, I'll put that in. And then, the three-week period will allow Fred and I to write up a legal notice, get that to pay for Monday, have Catherine notify the neighbors.
Relative to certain things that are in the zoning code, and I'll give you one quick example of Kubler's. There's no real black and white rules inside the zoning code for Kubler's. So, Dave may add something or have a, a quote-unquote "policy" on roof decks, but I don't know, I think we have to redraft, you know, the zoning code. If he wants to call it, whatever he's calling it, here you can, you know, we can figure that out at a, at a later date. If we want to put something, you know, black and white into the zoning code, I don't know if it's necessary.
Yeah, let's see how it goes, how many of these we have, we might just see a few, or.
Like model blocks in other windows, the model blocks kind of, okay. Next.
Discussion of the community values statement for Board of Selectmen.
This came up three weeks ago?
Yes, I believe.
It came up, it came up three weeks ago. Jeremy introduced it, introduced the concept to us, and it's, it's being led by our first selectman. In, in our packets so far, they gave us the news thing of the Board of Selectmen's objectives that stated, this is dated September tenth, of a whole bunch of stuff that's on here, which some have relative to planning zoning, some have relative to schools and first, and first responder stuff. The other thing that I think is very similar is the town plan vision from the, from the town plan and conservation that the Board of Selectmen did. I don't really know the derivation of what this is, I think Kara had a conversation with Jeremy today of what we're supposed to do and where we're coming from. I had not spoken to Jamie about it.
We have, we have this memo, which I think Fred's passing around here, a little bit, an email from Jamie's secretary, Lynda O'Leary. She talked about, you know, what is, what are the core values of Darian? And she's asking the Board of Education, Planning and Zoning Commission, Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen to get involved. We've given you as background the Board of Selectmen's goals and objectives. We have, I think we also put in your packet, page eight, is the Town Plan of Conservation and Development.
Yep.
Which is very broad, talks about goals, what does Darian want to be? And I don't think Jamie's looking for anything very lengthy for planning and zoning, but I think if you get her three, four, or five sentences, she'll work it together with the other information she's pulling together. The current Board of Selectmen wants to conclude their work on this by election day, which is.
So, they're asking for P and Z feedback?
P and Z feedback over the next couple of weeks.
So, they're getting a, a vision, a golden objective statement from P and Z, from Board of Education, from Board of Finance, and themselves, the four top boards.
Yep, and then they're going to make it into a value statement.
It's usually the four top.
So, do we have to come up with something new, or would we just, are these bullets and then sub-bullets underneath each? Because I'm looking at what you just handed out.
Yeah, I'll get.
And I would think that it would just be, we would just be under bullet four that says maintain and enhance town infrastructure.
Hold on one second. Relative to the four top boards and go to the OPC mini, is the RTM supposed to throw in something to it?
No, I think in this case, it's just the various.
The four boards, okay. Karen and I had a conversation today relative to this, I think exactly what you just said.
Yeah.
Is the same exact thing that she just said, or said earlier today. Instead of recreating the wheel, and I started to allude to that at the beginning, their Board of Selectmen's list is broad brush, it covers all, the entire town, which is Board of Education, Board of Finance, and, you know, Public Safety, and it's got us in here, too. So, I think what we would want to do is extract our stuff out of what they've already said, right? Is what you, I think, what you said this afternoon, what you're saying now. And then recraft it, so ours doesn't have to be as long as theirs.
Right, no, I think, right, planning boards, right, we have a combined planning and zoning board, but planning boards have a sort of limited, narrowly construed remit. And one of the major components of a planning board's responsibilities and objectives is to design and implement, you know, a conservation plan and development. We currently have one, that's, you know, they're in effect for, you know, a number of years. So, I think it makes sense, and it's a good exercise to, you know, review and sort of, you know, take time to study the currently in-place concert, you know, Darian, kind of Darian, Darian Plan of Conservation and Development, and extract from that what is already, you know, this, the planning board's remit, and sort of bullet, you know, bullet point them, or, you know, put them into action words that makes it sort of more, that lends itself to this kind of statement, but is still consistent with our statutory, you know, remit. And I think it's sort of a good exercise to like, go through the plan, but, you know, enhance or sort of focus in on certain aspects of it for the current vision statement, that's necessary, but it should not, you know, it's not, it shouldn't conflict. It shouldn't conflict with the state of Connecticut, you know, planning documents and, you know, the like.
I was just questioning, so, Jeremy, what exactly are they asking of us?
I think they're asking for a, I said, okay, I'll call it a community value, what does Darian want to be?
The plan vision statement.
Yes.
Yeah, this is, this is pretty, this looks pretty good, these are their.
Right, but that's theirs.
It's theirs.
That's their.
We've, so, we need something in addition to this, I was just commenting on this.
No.
I was commenting on this as well.
We're getting ours.
Each four boards is going to be ours, so I think where we're going.
Our own separate ones, sorry.
Right, so I think what we're saying is, is synthesize that book down to one piece of paper.
No, but it's, the Board of Selectmen will be working on the community values, we would like your input, it's not for us to come up with our own.
Yeah, I didn't think we had to rewrite it, I think, I just.
Collaborating on the community value statement.
Jeremy, do you think we need to have an additional goal and objective? I thought that we were just adding our two cents into the RTM's goal and objective statement.
Well, certainly, what you could do is look at the, what's interesting is, the Selectmen did a vision statement for the town plan, it's on, which I think we put in your packet.
Yep.
And you, I read through it today, I said, boy, that, the way I read that is kind of what they're pretty much looking for in terms of broad brush, and what does Darian want to be? You know, it talks about commercial, residential, balancing open space, environmental, the whole package of that.
Right.
And I said, you know what, that, something like that is what they're looking for, whether it's those exact words or it's something simple, I think Steve's right, they're not looking for more than a page max, absolute max.
Because that, that might, I'm sorry, good, good, George.
Uh, if I may, I, I did look through the plan and, and I understand what you're saying. I think we should not reinvent the wheel here. But to the extent I, we could, um, enhance a little bit, I did note in particular the promotion of sustainability.
Yep.
Which I think is kind of the trend that we ought to, you know, note and participate in in particular. Uh, because I, I think the town has already adopted some sustainability plan or other, I think.
That's correct.
So we ought to acknowledge our buy-in to that if we do.
Just, just so, just so you all remember it, one second, um, is, we're the Planning and Zoning Commission, we're the umbrella over, um, ARB and, um, and, um, Zoning Board of Appeals. Like ARB, those guys want you to use, you know, sustainability and reused materials and whatnot. So I think what you're saying is exactly kind of what you're doing. And I'm, I'm, to answer your question, I'm ninety-nine percent sure that Board of Education's doing the wrong.
Okay, so they do want to add.
Right, right, we have a standard.
I think my only two cents is what my two cents always is, which is I like preservation.
That's right.
But that's, that's what is the Plan of Conservation and Development, so I think that's completely.
So, um, it, so again, the way I interpret this is this town plan vision statement.
That's theirs.
Right, and they want our input, so it's collaboration. So I think they did a great job for this town plan vision. I highlight the parts that I think really are us. Sustainability is the only one that I, I do think that that word should be in here. Or, uh, we have development with preservation and protection. The only word that I am not sure I love in here is traditional. I don't know what that means. Traditional neighborhood, commercial centers. I think we live in a very fast-changing world. And I think if we had talked about offices ten years ago, they wouldn't look like, um, Havenly or whatever. What's the name of the?
Haven.
Everly, Everwell.
Yeah.
Yeah, that just came in. So I think traditional doesn't really, I don't, I don't know about that word choice.
You gotta remember, this is not ours.
Again, I hear you, and she wants us to collaborate on this. I'm not gonna rewrite this.
Shuck, that's, that's dumb.
This is our, we adopted this.
Right, we adopted this, and this is where she's saying, do we reinvent the wheel? What, use your input based on the bullet points that really affect P and Z? So I'm saying, I think it's a pretty good statement. So if the bullet points at sustainability, I don't think I like traditional, right? So I don't know what traditional means. We, we, you know, neighborhood, commercial centers, these are things that we.
It might have been more of a, uh, architectural comment, I don't know.
It's the old, it's New England character.
Correct.
But we have character, so I'm okay with the word character. I'm not okay with the word traditional. But do you, are you, because this stuff that's part of us, should we get together or send out some emails to me to kind of put this into our own statements? That's what we prefer?
Correct.
Or Jeremy, how would you like to go on? Would you like individual emails?
But what I, what I was suggesting is I asked Kara to take the lead on this with Jeremy. So maybe she can draft up something. You can send her emails, like, this is the statement I want, or she drafts up something one page.
And then you can email all of this and we can all put our two cents, drive each other crazy.
Yes.
Um, Jim?
I, I only have one, uh, thought. And that is, I, I've been sitting here three, what, three years, two and a half?
Two and a half. Two, actually, two on the dot.
We, we, we address zoning issues every meeting. I have yet to get engaged in any planning issues. What does the planning part of our?
Well, that's that.
Because the planning part, the planning is, is sort of a more narrowly, it's a narrowly construed, much more limited exercise of power. And it's, you know, it's only what is statutorily, you know, given to the board that you're enabled to enact. So it's mostly reporting on municipal improvements, sales of, you know, municipal land, which ironically, we also addressed this evening. And it's, you know, we're statutorily, you know, responsible for every, you know, I think it's ten years or whatever it is. Planning and issuing a, um, town plan of conservation and development, which should cover certain areas and should not conflict with regional and state of Connecticut similar plans. And that's pretty much the remit for a planning board.
Great.
Um, zoning is much more expansive, um, and that's why I think many towns, I think, I read somewhere that fifty percent of Connecticut towns, in fact, have combined their planning and zoning boards because planning boards have such a limited scope and, and court have looked at their remit as, you know, you could only act on what is specifically empowered, that you're empowered to do. So I think, um, you know, we need to be mindful of that. In, you know, since planning, we, I do have this remit of, uh, you know, designing and implementing a Plan of Conservation and Development. It's, that work has been done. This plan is in effect. And so it's a big dense document. It's actually pretty informative. It's research, it's evidence-based. It's specific to the town and, um, it's, you know, it's always a good exercise to revisit documents.
The commission, we don't have to worry about the planning part of our, and for another eight years.
Right.
Right, well, in, to further, to further what you're saying, some towns, I look at it from two sides of the fence, which is the, the New York side and the Connecticut side. A lot in Connecticut, there's towns, there's towns that have a planning commission.
Oh, yeah.
And a zoning commission. The planning commission does a master plan and says, you should do this, this, and this, and the zoning commission just kind of really enforces it. In our town, for whatever reason, fifty years, a hundred years ago, they combined the two. In Westchester County and in the state of New York, where I do a ton of work, most of their stuff is done on planning commissions. And by statute, and we're getting too deep into the weeds, but by statute, in the state of Connecticut, they do one of these plans every single year. In Westchester and in, in New York State, all of a sudden, a town votes one day, hey, let's do a master plan. And they just do a master plan and they start from scratch and they, and, but there's no reason to do it. That's why I think I kind of like Connecticut. You are a hundred percent correct. Most of our work in the last two years has been zoning-related, um, and not much planning-related. But I will tell you that that book that we worked on for a year and a half is a master plan, so.
But it spells out sort of goals and action plans and policies.
So to, I'll, I'll let you talk in one second. But just to, just to finish what we're doing here. We're supposed to figure out, discuss this community values. Does everyone, is everyone okay with, with Kara starting, you know, some kind of document with Jeremy's input? Making sure Jer- we know what Jamie wants on a piece of paper and then get it to us next time we can go over it?
Yeah, and it'll be based on the already approved master plan.
Right, you're not creating anything from scratch.
No.
Perfect.
You're, like I said earlier, you're gonna whittle that down to one page. George, you have something to say?
I just, uh, thought I'd throw in two cents to pick you back on what Kara has already said, but maybe with a, a, a little bit of a, uh, a point. Which is that this is really guidance for applicants. This is what town has accomplished. This is what the town is sensitive to. This is how the town wants to go forward. So that is done exactly as you say, and, and it is a perfect document to incorporate into our values for the future and all that.
Okay, it's like especially if, if we said in that plan two years ago, we don't want any more beaches, we don't want any more of this, we don't want any of that. Pave them over. And they want to put in new whatever at the beach, and that being contradictory to that.
And that would be a problem.
That would be a problem.
There you go.
Okay, we good?
Should we move on to the Planning and Zoning Commission member to the Blight Review Board?
Um, Kevin Cunningham was the, um, our planning commi- our planning commission member to the Blight Review Board. Um, and now we have the opportunity to vote in another one. Okay.
Does anyone else want to do it? I'll do it if no one wants. George, you want to do it?
I, 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 I'm kind of entapped, I think.
Oh, if you want to do it, then.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Okay, so I would nominate George. Am I allowed to nominate? I have some.
Sure.
I second the nomination.
Okay, those in favor?
Congratulations, George.
Thank you. Oh, good, another meeting, another meeting.
You're in town, come on, you guys, nineteen, cold, two hours. Around the corner. All right, next.
We move on to the deliberations and possible decisions. On the first item would be the special permit application number one-two-five-dash-F, site plan Town of Darien, two Renshaw Road.
You don't have to read the whole.
Proposal to install the new generator. Okay, yes.
You don't have to read the whole thing. Last meeting, we went through, um, all the public hearings and then we delivered every single one of them. And I think in every single case, we instructed staff to, um, do positive reports, approvals on all of them. In our packet, we have a whole, a whole bunch of them. Did, who was missing last week? Did you watch the?
I watched it all.
You're full up, you're full up to speed.
Correct.
Fantastic, okay. So let's see if we can kind of bang these things out. The first one, again, as, as Liz just said, was the Town Hall generator. Anybody have any comments to it?
I have no comment.
The only thing that I noticed, and I, I forget him saying it, is there an existing generator at this building today?
There is. It's not big enough to, uh, run the whole building.
Okay.
And it's not over there. It's somewhere else.
I'm looking at, I don't know, it's a replacement generator. I thought it was new, 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 but I think there was one over by the freezer, right?
The other side of the building somewhere.
For the maintenance center.
Like a ball field or something.
And so, and this, Kara, anything? George, good? Jennifer, Liz? Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the resolution I submitted. Okay, those in favor? Got it.
One day.
Next, Liz.
Next, the flood damage prevention application number three-nine-eight, site plan application three-oh-seven, amendment to special permit number seventeen, the Springdale Athletic Club, Inc., at Two Camp Avenue. This was a proposal to construct an elevated wood deck.
My only item on this one is, and I don't know what the application said, Mike Viti is the applicant. He is the Building Department Inspector. This says the applicant's address is Town Hall. So it's his place of business.
Yeah, I'll, I think.
I'd, I'd would rather see that be his house.
Yep.
Because it looks like the town's proposing.
That's right, I was confused by that. Thanks.
Okay.
I didn't really have any other comments to this. Let's start on Liz's side. Anything, Liz?
Nope.
Okay. Good. Entertained a motion to approve as submitted, actually with the one change.
With one change. Jim Rand?
Second. Those in favor? Okay, next.
Special permit application number three-oh-eight, HPH Salon LLC, at eight-ninety-five Boston Post Road. This was a proposal to establish a salon, personal service establishment in a retail operation on the first floor space.
If you remember this.
Formally occupied by Bella Pietra.
Correct, this was the plumbing supply store. Next to the plumbing supply store is, um.
Mathemancy or one of those learning places.
Kumon?
No, it's the other one that's in there now. Uh, the picture place, Big Shots.
Big Shots, right.
Big Shots took over half. This is the other half. It's a business for a business. We went over everything in the application. We, as a commission, determined that there's plenty of parking there. I didn't see anything in the, in the draft resolution. How about this side?
Um, I want to comment, if I may, at, uh, E, uh, among the resolutions, E, uh, I think we could say that both doors shall remain unlocked during business hours.
Thank you, George.
That favor?
Good, yeah.
Good?
Okay. Jen, anything?
No, that's good. I would like.
Entertained a motion to approve as amended?
Motion to approve.
Jennifer, looking for a second? Liz?
Kara.
Kara. All those in favor? Next.
Special permit application three-oh-seven, Roseanne Hoffman, seven-five-seven Boston Post Road. Proposal to convert the second floor of the existing structure to a two-bedroom residential apartment.
This was a nice old house way, way, way back when. They converted it to offices way, way, way back when. They put a big parking lot in the back. And now with the change of views, they're bringing it back to what it was originally intended. They have more parking that they want to do with. Pretty straightforward application. I didn't see anything in here that jumped out at me. Liz, anything?
Nothing.
Good.
Nothing for me.
All good. Entertained a motion to approve as submitted.
So move.
Jim, one second. George, those in favor? Six, nothing. The guy can still win.
Uh, next, coastal site plan review number three-four-three, flood prevention, uh, damage prevention application three-nine-seven. Landfilling excavation and regressing application four-six-seven, Mike Penneth and Lauren White, twenty-three Lighthouse Way. Proposals to raise an existing single-family dwelling built.
This is a, a, a house that's probably beyond its useful life at the end of Lighthouse Road of Logan Pond. They have great plans, great, um, architecture, um, in, in harmony with the neighborhood. They're probably the small cell set for the block and the kids on my cross team. Any questions on this one? Liz?
No questions.
Kim?
I had no question.
Kara?
No.
Entertained a motion to approve as submitted.
Just, uh.
George, I'm sorry.
Uh, the, the stat's gonna walk real slowly until the EPC acts on this tomorrow night.
Yes, what we would do in a case like this is kind of wait, just confirm that EPC approves it tomorrow. And then we'll, on this one, we usually sit on the approval letter for a day. And, because what you want to do is make sure everyone's giving the applicant the same message. Okay, here's the remaining approvals you need to get. So thank you for pointing that out because.
So should, should we even make our proposal?
Yeah, I was gonna, yeah, you're right.
Or not?
No, it's, it's implied that if they don't get it.
Okay.
But that's the last thing in the back. I think it's very rare.
But you're right, George. Thanks for pointing that up. Yep. Uh, we'll wait on that one.
He's a lawyer, man. You gotta have those guys. We're missing Dick DeDana. Okay? Uh, motion to, looking for a motion to approve as submitted?
Motion to approve as submitted.
Jennifer, looking for a second?
Second.
Liz, those in favor? Six, nothing? Two touch, two extra points?
Landfilling excavation and regressing application four-six-four, Neil and Ann Meyer, thirty-five Sun Switch Road. Proposal to regrade the property in association with the reconfiguration expansion of existing driveway.
This was the architect with the Russian accent, right? The engineer, the customer reviews.
No, but this one with the tight driveway, very tight driveway.
Yeah, but, but the architect was the.
No, because he, this is the last one.
Because he, this is the last one? Are this a tight driver that they're moving at six, they're moving at two feet to the left?
Yep.
Because they got two kids that are like, get lunch for them.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, let's start on this side this time. You good?
I have nothing.
There's no typos in any of these things?
No.
Fred's that good?
Well done.
Look at him all happy.
I'll try to find a typo next.
Uh, looking for a motion to approve as submitted?
So move.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Second, those in favor? Six, nothing?
Last but not least, landfilling evac- uh, evacuation, excavation and regressing application four-six-six, two Half Mile Road LLC. Two Half Mile Road, proposal to regrade yard areas more than twenty-five feet from the residence now under construction.
Right, this is the one where the guy has a sloping side lawn. Jennifer and I think it's a flat side lawn. He wants to make it flatter. And he nicely enough, he asked our permission in advance of coming in two years from now, asking for it. Right?
Yep, that's great.
I didn't see much of anything on here.
That one, fine.
We're good?
I'm okay.
Looking for a motion to approve as submitted?
Motion to.
There we go, we got Jennifer.
Jennifer and Jim.
Jennifer and Jim?
All in favor.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye, six, nothing.
Approval of the minutes from September twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen.
Okay.
I think this is an excellent job.
The guy's gonna get an ego. Oh, I have one. We, we used to call, when we said lawyers, we used to call them attorney Gleason. Did we switch that back to regular? It sounds as Mr. Gleason? Do we have any, we started that a couple of years ago.
We've been changing this.
Oh, that's it.
Well, you know, he starts off with attorney.
Right, then it goes, then it goes to Mr. So want to be consistently consistent? I think, I think.
Fred has no work. She's in the selection.
It's kind of work. We did everything, we, we, we had a schedule. We're taking weeks off now.
Okay.
You're good?
Motion to approve the minutes from September twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen.
Uh, we got that from Liz. Looking for a second?
Second.
Jennifer? Ooh.
All right, now we're.
Jennifer got it.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Rand.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Look at, look at the new chairman of the, in favor? You really want to get out of here?
Possibly is my last meeting, Jeremy.
Six, nothing?
But we'll see.
Okay.
Perfect.
Next on the minutes, project status update.
Right.
The, you know, Old Town Hall Homes is continuing with their, it'll be finished next year. Three-twenty, three-thirty, Boston Post Road, two office buildings near Duchess and Trader Joe's. Three-twenty, three-thirty, Boston Post Road, two office buildings near Duchess and Trader Joe's continue. Federal Realty's called our office about, saying, Dave, how do you want the plans for our project? They're pretty big, do you want them electronically? So they are making steps to, once they're done with the work going on around Equinox, to start in on demolishing Prism Paint Building, starting in on the new Walgreens, which will.
Prism paint's going down first, wow.
Yeah, well, it's gonna be their construction staging area, so that, so you're gonna start seeing that.
Prism paint, that's one question.
It's little, right on the Rotten Avenue.
The house there.
Oh, 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 gee, yeah, forgot that even exists.
You should have seen the plans on that, they had some fancy thing of like, wait a second, is that next to Bill's Autobody?
And one, one interesting one is the RTM meeting on Monday, October twenty-first. Federal Realty and David Genovese will both be presenting their plans for informational purposes to the RTM. We felt that there was a point now where the RTM and the general public's super interested. It gives them an opportunity, now the plans are about to get underway. I did speak to the Palmers as well, they declined the invitation for the time being.
Really?
In terms of, they gotta really focus on, I just got an email from Mr. Palmer saying, look, why don't, we're gonna focus on getting going, and then we'll catch up with the RTM at a later date.
That, having those guys present to the RTM before they break ground is a fantastic idea.
I think it will really be very good, it'll be on TV, the hundred-member RTM. They'll have constituents that call them and say, what's going on? So the timing's perfect. So that'll be Monday, twenty-first, I'm guessing it'll be on channel seventy-nine.
Now, relative to Palmers versus Federal, Federal's got Jersey batteries there, staking out stuff, moving parking around. They're gonna be an official groundbreaking, and relative to Palmers, Palmers, you know, is moving tenants, there's a couple of guys left. You know, everybody's, most people are closing except for the dry cleaner and the bar, right?
The dry cleaner doesn't, she's not part of it.
No, the dry cleaner's coming down, that building's coming down.
Fabricare.
Fabricare's coming down.
Oh, Fabricare, I was thinking of the other, I was thinking of Sam.
So they're both moving behind the scenes, there's a lot of, Fred and I have met with both of them about construction drawings, construction phasing. You know, what, how are you gonna fence off at certain areas contractor parking?
But that's, but my point is relative to your RTM meeting, that if Palmers technically breaks ground, it's like demoing before Federal. Palmers, Palmers, if Palmers ever, they don't, it's no requirement to go in front of the RTM, but.
Correct.
It's, it's a voluntary thing.
It's not gonna happen. Palmers not gonna get ahead of Federal.
You don't think so?
They've got three tenants still there.
Yeah, well, I'll talk to you about that a little bit later. That's fine, anything else?
That's all I had.
Okay, calendar update.
We're not gonna meet next week or on the fifteenth, the next meeting will be Tuesday, October twenty-second. It's a very full public hearing night. I think Fred has here, there's eight or nine public hearings that night, kind of like what we did, was it last week? Where we had numerous, hopefully relatively minor items. And then we'll see if after that night, we're ready to meet again on the fifth, which is election day, or the twelfth. We'll kind of see how it plays out.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other business? I'm good.
So it would not be the two.
Okay, nine fifteen, nine sixteen. Looking for a motion to, seeking a motion to adjourn?
Oh, a motion to adjourn.
That's a Liz, I have seconds from Jim. All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Thank you, folks.